Good evening and welcome back to everyone as we start a new school year here. Today is September 4th, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Milford School Committee. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV and any copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through central office. We have invitation to speak on the list first, but there's no one here, so we'll move right on to announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Anybody have anything?
I'd just like to thank everyone that got everything ready around town to get the schools off on a good start. I know the Highway Department was super busy getting crosswalks painted, the new sidewalk all around West Fountain was really nice, and then obviously all the administrative staff and everyone who makes the wheels turn around here. So, thank you to everyone who got us off to a good start.
Excellent. All right, onto the chairperson update. I have just two very brief things. It's just a reminder that next Wednesday on the 10th at 6 o'clock, Town Hall, there's a Finance Committee meeting I'll be attending in case there are any additional questions regarding how we came about looking for a new high school. Information was provided to them. They've had it for a little while. I haven't had any questions come back, so they may be happy with that information already.
Lucky you.
Lucky me. Is anybody planning on coming?
Is that six?
Is that six? Craig will be there. I just want to know if we have to double post this or not.
You don't have to double post anyways.
If you have too many of us, we'll...
According to what?
Oh, correct.
John has reached out to Jerry on that, and he's saying that we do not need to.
Wonderful. Then, if you have nothing to do, come hang on. And then the only other thing I have, a very, very brief update with the MSBA project. It's just that I believe we're in the middle of the OPM process of Phase Two, and there's some stuff coming up soon for that. Otherwise, I don't have much information other than they're rolling along with that. We'll move on to the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, sir. I did things a little different this year with our principals and directors. I just asked them a series of questions rather than have them come in and provide a report for everybody. So, I have some quotes that I want to talk through with everyone. But generally, we had a very, very smooth opening of schools. There were a lot of projects that took place over the summer that we're very excited about. I think that when you walk into all the schools this year, you'll notice there were some new floors done, and I'll talk through that in a minute. A lot of painting that was done. We tried to make sure that any tiles, well, except for right here, I think, but any tiles that had stains, we tried to replace those. So, the custodians worked very hard. Our maintenance department worked very hard. My first update here is from our tech director and grants and communications. The tech department was definitely very busy. They didn't have any new hires. They deployed 1,100 Chromebooks. They retired 1,400. They deployed 200 staff laptops and 20 desktops. They retired 200 laptops. They did some wiring at the high school for some more access points, and they prepped for additional access points, and they replaced multiple servers. Tim says that they had an extremely smooth, organized, and efficient summer and start to the year with technology. Hardware and equipment was distributed, collected with accuracy and efficiency. The staff and students have what they need. Their tech department takes great pride in their customer service in resolving tech tickets. They have the number, I'm not exactly sure what the number is, but they have the, between the three or four of them, they make sure that their number never reaches over a certain level, and if it does, they get on each other. So, it's very competitive, just making sure that those numbers stay down and they're getting to the tickets as quickly as possible. So, looking ahead, they, Tim reports that the beginning of the year brings a lot of tickets, just equipment that's not working right, or they have password issues and connectivity problems with printers and projectors. And so, a huge focus has been over the last few days and will continue to be over the next couple of weeks, just troubleshooting and make sure things are getting off on the right foot. Some protocols, procedures, and policies that they're working on are device use agreements, acceptable use policies, AI literacy, and issues around AI. So, those are things that they're looking at for this year. As far as communications goes, we're continuing to try to improve model and stress strong communication across our district. We think that we start with Tim. So, we're trying to put things in place to get Tim more involved with everybody across the district. We're going to start adding, I talked this through with Tim, in his weekly bulletins, we're going to start trying to add a picture of the week, and then hopefully that sort of draws people to that. I know it's, we've heard in the past, there's a lot of information there, but I think people like pictures, and pictures tell a story. So, we're going to try to add those moving forward. And then on the grants front, he's definitely seen an impact of the federal government on the number of grants available and the timing of these grants. So, he's going to, it's still early, but he's aware of the uncertainty involving some of these grants. So, that's an update from him. Let's see, what's this one? Shining Star, 147 students this year. We're still looking for three BAs. Other than that, we're fully staffed.
Is that typical enrollment?
Yeah, for this time of year. We go up to almost 200 usually, but there's slots that are open in case kids are identified and we have to provide them with the education. Her, she reports that her playground looks amazing. The maintenance department replaced all their broken swings and put new mulch down, so they're ready to go for it. Shining Star looks amazing, so she was happy about that. Her staff vocalized excitement and how the vibe was positive within the building and how they're looking forward for the year. They're looking forward to classroom replacement rubrics and special ed assessments for initial At Woodland, there's roughly 1,000 students. It hasn't changed. It's down a little bit. I think last year we opened with 1,035 or so. They hired nine new staff members between teachers and adjustment counselors and BA, actually, there's quite a bit of BAs. There's five or six different BAs. So, they're, they may have an opening or two with BAs, but generally fully staffed. We painted every single hallway stairwell at Woodland. Amazingly, the company that we hired found the colors that were used, so they matched colors perfectly. It took a little longer than they wanted, and we were trying to coordinate between Stacy, Woodland, and the high school for all the painting, but, so we were still painting during opening day with the staff. I think we were, we might have been still had an area or two when the students came. It happened when they were, when they came in later after the staff and students left. But generally, it's a brand-new look over at Woodland. Well, same old look, but it looks fresh. David reports that Woodland had a great opening during their PD days. That was the first two days. They offered a menu of training opportunities for TAs and BAs and included workshops of CPR, de-escalation, stop the bleed, literacy, and others. The teaching staff engaged in content PD on literacy, science, special ed, ELD, and math. And then they also talked through the school improvement plan. What they were looking forward to is a revamped schedule to allow for increased faculty collaboration, implementation of EL, our new literacy program, and then social emotional learning activities. At Brookside, I don't know the number right now, they hit roughly at 500-plus. They hired a couple of EL teachers, a nurse, and three, four, 10 BAs and TAs and a STEM teacher. There wasn't a lot of maintenance going on at Brookside. We did identify a couple of leaks in the roof that we were working on with Tremco, so it's still under warranty. So, whenever there is a leak identified, they come out and they fix it. So, that's something that we have to keep on the radar and think about. Think about the warranty moving forward. Generally, the students were very eager to return. The energy was high in the building. They were excited to roll out the EL curriculum, strengthen the MTSS process, and then continue with team efficiencies, including CLR practices and more PD for TAs and BAs. They had a late resignation of their assistant principal, so they're right now working through that. I believe they had finalist interviews yesterday. So, they're, they're getting down to the wire, and hopefully they're going to offer somebody a position. In the meantime, Dr. McIntyre has been serving as assistant principal over there while also leading the school building process. At the high school...
I'm a...
Yes, sir.
The Brookside side got power washed.
It did get power washed.
Awesome. Thank you. It's great having you see this.
Let's see, we had, there's 1,272 students at the high school. It's down a little bit, but it's still very high. Our lowest class is 303, highest is 325, so all roughly about the same. A number of new hires, looks like 15 or so. They had some late resignations, so we're still working through. We have to hire a couple of special ed teachers because of late resignations. We just had another resignation last night for a different position, not student-facing, so those are things that we're going to have to hire. We did some painting here, so some of the areas that leaked last year, like over here in the front stairwell, those were all freshly painted. We did notice that whatever was on the walls bleeding through a little bit, so we might have to touch it up, but freshly painted. And Josh is excited that we had AC in the auditorium, which we hadn't had in a couple of years, so Carlos and his team got that working. It was, it was actually cold in the auditorium. He says that they enjoyed a great start at Milford High School. The environment was both positive and focused, and early reports from teachers indicate that our revised electronic policy is already making a very positive impact on classroom culture. I think that, I believe I was working with Kerry and maybe Melissa, maybe Wendy also, I can't remember. The first day of school, walking down the hall with just kids actually engaging in conversation with you as you walked down the hall, nobody's looking like this, they're talking to you, which was fantastic. So, that was great. And he also says that we continue to make excellent progress with the building project and very excited to hire an OPM and really start the feasibility study. So, that's exciting. And then, let's see, what else I have? Oh, Family Resource Center. An update from the Family Resource Center is we enrolled 198 students over the summer, which is, it's not the highest, but it's on the high side. So, coming into this year in June, we were down, but we enrolled 200 kids. And also, there's an additional currently, or this is as of last week, so it might be actually more. There's 51 students on the FRC log. So, I believe as of today, our current enrollment in schools is 4,399, so that's down a little bit. Generally, we're between 4,300 and 4,600 in the last however many years. Been between those numbers. So, we're roughly where we are every year. Come October 1st, though, we're going to really know what the numbers are. That's when our SIMS data is in. By then, we know who's still on vacation, who's actually showing up, and who just hasn't shown up isn't going to show up. Yeah, so that's, that's what we have going on at FRC right now. Those people over there work very hard. And then at Stacy, there was a number of hires over there. The opening days have been full of energy, excitement, positivity, as students and staff settled in their routines and reconnected. We painted a number of classrooms over there. I think two floors of classrooms were painted. The stairwell, some of the stairwells were painted, I think, over near the auditorium. We also recapped the stairs. So, if you've ever been up that big metal, that big set of stairs in the hallway, the one that goes around right up the middle, all those stairs are capped because a lot of the tiles were just chipped and dangerous. So, those were capped. We're also going to put plexiglass on the railings. I just, it makes me nervous. So, we're going to do that in one of the, one of the vacations. The elevator has been inoperable throughout the summer, so the custodians had a heck of a time trying to clean the place. They had to move stuff up and down stairs instead of elevators. Last week, we finally, the elevator was finally fixed. It was finally, we couldn't use it because it had to get inspected, so it took us a couple of days to get an inspection. So, on Friday, the inspector finally came in. We got it inspected. Then on Monday, we came in, it didn't work. And then what had happened was there was some kind of connection that was not part of this job, but something failed, and now we had to wait for that part. So, yeah, that's where we're at with that. We tried to rush it in, but it's just, we're at the mercy of all these other people in mail and so on and so forth. Otherwise, though, Stacy's been great. And then finally, at Memorial School, Kerry and I were over there. We spent some time over there with our, with the kindergarten students yesterday. And then the dual-language program that started, that's been, that's gone really well. One thing that we're still trying to work out is our, the coordination of buses, because we have some kids that are slated to go to Brookside, so they get on a Brookside bus, drive over to Brookside, and then they have to go to Memorial. And it's been a little bit of a problem area. We're working on it. Otherwise, Memorial has been a great vibe. There was a number of floors that were redone. The carpet was taken out and tile was put down. There was some movement done, and I think that just generally over at all the schools, it's been really positive and great. So, that's what I have for opening day. I don't know if anybody has questions. I don't know if anybody was able to see any of the schools open as parents and have comments. I don't know.
Woodland looks fantastic. Walking through as a parent, so.
Good.
I can attest, Kristen's first day of school, she got the email from Josh saying, "Bring your sweatshirt. The auditorium is finally cold." So, that was a big deal. And, you know, just being around the district and whatnot, there seems to be a sense of ownership of the buildings. Again, just little things like the Brookside sign, I know we relapsed, but like that sign's been molding gross for years, and the fact it got power washed this year is, I thought, you know, it's the little details that I think mean a lot.
I would just add, I would agree. Woodland looks fantastic. Brookside looks the same way, similar to kind of the tone from your wife. I ran into a teacher from high school, and he reacted like, big fancy trophy was won. The only thing he yelled across the parking lot was, "I have AC." And he was very excited. So, the team did a great job, and they've obviously made a pretty big impact on everybody, which I think obviously also helps morale and how everybody's starting this year. Anything else?
Craig, just curious, how have the high school teachers navigated the cell phone? Like, is there something in each room, or kind of how are we just managing that logistically?
You know what? I haven't actually seen where the phones go, honestly.
I know a teacher's opposed it. They have like a thing like the back of the door.
Yeah, that they slide something in.
I don't know if everyone was doing that.
I didn't even look, honestly. I've been in a classroom, but I just haven't looked.
Okay. Teachers have what they need is kind of where I was going with it, so I think the answer is yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
The kids that I've talked to have just said, "We're not allowed to have the phone."
Simple.
Wonderful.
Everyone do that.
Yeah, so they, I guess over the summer, pouches were hung on the back of the doors.
Yeah. I haven't seen them in action, though, honestly.
That's right. I'm glad it's working.
But...
Apparently, they hung them, and some of the doors weren't closed, so above and below, they figured it out.
But as of right now, pushback has been minimal with kids.
Excellent.
Excellent. All right.
Want to move on to the next?
Yeah, is that enough break for you before you talk more?
Yeah.
Please.
So, first, I guess I'd like to say that when I thought about goals for the upcoming year, I thought about what's going to lead to basically setting a foundation for, you know, a multi-year tenure as superintendent. It could go in a million different directions, but I also have realized that, you know, even, I've been around for 27, going on 28 years in December, I think. It might be 29, I don't know. I've lost track. There's tons that I need to learn still, and areas that I know that I just need to get involved with and dig deeper. So, I thought about those as I thought about these, these different goals for the upcoming year. I've also realized that we identified three district priorities, which I look at as, these are district priorities that we've kind of talked about and saying, they're things that we want our district to move or directions we want our district to really focus on. But I don't look at those as my goals. I want to be held accountable to those district priorities, but I also have other goals, personal goals. So, the document that I shared with you is more about what I want to do personally to get us towards, to keep us moving in the direction of those district priorities, if that makes sense. So, goal number one, develop and implement systematic leadership structure to foster a cohesive, unified, and effective administrative team. I've listed a number of key actions there. I'm not going to read them all to you, but, but basically, establish a couple of different cabinets that right, currently, right now, don't exist, one being a teaching and learning cabinet directed basically, as it makes sense, I hope, teaching and learning. So, curriculum instruction assessment and all, all the folks that are involved in that, all the leadership folks that are involved in that, but then also an operations cabinet that focuses on the business facilities, transportation, and administrative functions of what goes on in our district. It's on a, it's been on a rare occasion that we pulled all those folks together, so I'm hoping that they'll feel less like they're on their own island and more like they're part of this team. So, we have our first meeting of that cabinet coming up. But then also, key actions within that, that goal are one-on-one meetings with principals and directors and folks that I evaluate, but then also talking through how doing learning walks with them and that sort of thing. And then standardizing meeting protocols for everybody. And I do want to say before I move on, like, try to figure out benchmarks and evidence of success. I just, I guess I had a hard time with like coming up with numbers. Like, I don't know that any of these goals are to say that if we do this, then you're going to see X amount of improvement on a standardized score. I just don't think they're going to lead to that. So, the kind of benchmarks or evidence that I hope that you'll see are more task-related, I guess. So, maybe I could show you leadership meeting agendas, and you could kind of read through and see the kind of things we're meeting about. I talked about like creating an organizational chart and job descriptions, and then maybe we can look at MCIA data, that survey data that kids and staff would take, and just evidence of collaboration, that sort of thing. Do you want me to go through all of them, or you want to stop at one?
Why don't we pause at each one and see if anybody has any thoughts? I'll just jump in quickly and also say the, the idea here is an update on where the goals stand. If everyone is happy with what we have, we can obviously vote for these to be the final goals for the year. So, if you have input, feedback, far away, if not, we can keep going.
I gave my feedback already, so I'm good with how I presented.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say, Craig, I love for sort of the benchmark there. I agree with you. It's not going to necessarily translate into MCAS or I-ready scores, but I love the idea of sharing sort of the action items and how we're taking action, because that, to me, is kind of the most important thing about this. I think the goals as written, generally, I was really comfortable with, just that we could add alignment with sort of the DESI standards and indicators so that we're all clear when we're going to do the assessment, that that's baked in, and we're not starting that later.
Absolutely. So, I'll just make that comment now. Once the goals are agreed upon, I'm going to work with Craig to line them up and actually create the tool now so that we all have a copy of what we'll be doing in the spring.
Excellent.
Any other thoughts on these?
Yeah, just quickly, on goal one, I had the opportunity to sit with Craig a week ago, so, yeah, goal one, certainly, the cabinet and focusing on the, you know, the particular facility side of things. We know the facilities subcommittee has met with Craig, so he understands what we're looking for and the direction there. And also, I think it's great to see, you know, just looking at, sorry, I lost my spot on it, the organization chart. I think that's something that a few of us have continually asked for, so to see this as part of a key action, I think it's going to be important, and just, you know, that org chart and just the reporting structures and the responsibility. So, within goal one, those two things, those two items were kind of primary of my focus that I'd like to see, so glad to see it in there.
All right.
Go on.
On to goal two.
All right. One thing we're going to, I'm going to talk about actually next, next meeting is the new super induction, new superintendent induction program. Part of that program is developing an entry plan. As you can imagine, there are, in this program, there's a number of, there's a number of superintendents. I don't remember what it is, 20-something, but some of them are in a, some of them are brand-new to districts. Some of them have been, you know, maybe a year or two in a district. And then some people are like me that have been in the district for a long time and have kind of moved up. Either way, in any, any role, everybody is required to develop this entry plan. And again, like I said, we'll talk more about it next week, but I, next meeting. It's part of what I said at the beginning, right? This, the entry plan is about listening and learning to a bunch of different stakeholders and then trying to understand where our strengths are, where we need some work, and what's missing in our district, and then creating an improvement plan around that. So, that's basically what this goal is about, assessing strengths, challenges, and then understanding what stakeholders might have as priorities and how we can help meet those It may be that I find out that the three priorities that we're working on now are the right priorities. It might be that I'm missing something and we have to add a priority. I don't know. So, I want to go into this process without bias. It's going to be difficult, so I need to think it through. One thing that I have thought about is, do I need to hire somebody with no ties to the district to kind of lead this process for me? I don't know. So, that's one thing I'm kind of thinking about. But in any event, next, at the next meeting, I'll have sort of this for you. I'm also bringing my, my coach with me, and she's going to talk to you guys for a few minutes anyways and explain the program. So, she'll be here at next meeting to talk through this, too. I don't know if anybody has questions about that. All right. Third is about just identifying and fostering optimal learning in working environments that enable students and staff to achieve their highest potential. And I think one thing that... And I think one thing that's, that is going to require a lot of time and energy is the leadership of the school building committee to advance the Milton High School building project. I'm fortunate to have the experience at Woodland to draw upon. So I, and I also know how much time it was at Woodland and I can only imagine that the high school is going to be more time than that. But I'm ready for it and excited for it because the, what happened at Woodland was, it was one of the greatest experiences of my education career, being a part of that. So I'm looking forward to this also. And then also, like, I'm really focused on thinking about literacy and what we're doing with professional development. I want to think about our staff wellness and professional growth programs and how can we identify, develop better programming for our staff. Figuring out ways to regularly assess our climate and culture, just beyond the MCIA survey that we do, but how can we do it more regularly and strategically? And then, I guess finally, how do we, how do we get more student voice into some of the decisions that we're making? Because I really feel that's a, it's a missing piece to what we're doing. I think at times, we've gotten feedback from parents and caretakers. But I would say on a rare occasion do we get the student input and I think, I think we need to do a better job of that. So that was, that's basically what that goal is about. Questions about that one?
Chris?
Yeah, just quickly, yeah, obviously the school building process, as we look at this high school project, is its own very large task in and of itself, so certainly, you know, that could be a goal all on its own. But I appreciate that being part of it. It's just, in a sense, it's more expected. I think, and going back to what Meg was saying, just about, you know, putting numbers on things and what you'd said of putting numbers on our items when you start talking about the regular assessment, establishing systems, like, I feel like, yeah, everybody's looking for those numbers, but if we see what is, we consider as expected improvement in areas, right? We've got a new math program. We've seen improvements already. We're rolling out a new English language, or ELA, sorry, program, right? So it's, we're expecting to see gains. So I think that from my side, as long as we see those gains, we don't need a specific number. If we see a drop, then we can reassess and figure out there. But again, from my side of it, yeah, a specific number is really irrelevant as long as we're seeing comprehensive gains collectively.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I'll add, I'm looking at the benchmarks for literacy specifically and just talking about providing measurable student outcomes, showing improvements. And then the second piece, you actually have comments on these that talks about demonstrating progress towards literacy goals. The only thing I'm curious about is whether or not that's perhaps a little, I don't want to call it unfair, but I feel like knowing that this is year one of something new, I almost think that we shouldn't really be expecting to see any big measurable changes. For me, I think it would be more important to hear from staff to find out, like, what's your gut on the first year? How did it feel like it worked? Did the students take to it? Is this something that you guys got better at or more efficient at over the course of the year? Does it feel like it's getting easier to provide the lessons as you guys settle in? I know with math, we took a couple of years before we even asked you for anything, right? So I don't think we should really be looking at them saying, are we better readers now? And in the first year, it might be hard. So perhaps there's a different way. I know we have to give this, you know, that three or four years before we start seeing something concrete, so.
Well, we did math, we did student-staff surveys, right?
We did. I'm also wondering, like, for some of our literacy inputs and outputs at the district level, Carol has some really specific, like, as we're doing learning walks, we want to see, you know, ninety-five percent of the time that we go into K-5 classrooms, they're using grade-level appropriate text, which is a measure that is about implementation and not necessarily about the student growth across the board. So I'm wondering if you can use some of those that we have in our district and put output data.
Good point. Yeah, and then that's the whole point, right? We're going to put, we're going to put grade-level texts in kids' hands and make sure that all teachers are doing that. And that's what we hope, that's the intended, expected outcome, is that kids will be better readers for it, right?
Absolutely.
So good, that's a good measure.
There's three other measures. I don't remember exactly what they are, but they're from the learning walk tool that Carol has been using across the boards. We have data on where we were at the K-5 level prior to implementing exponential learning and so where we want to go by the after-year one as well.
Excellent, yeah, that sounds like that'll be a good stuff to see at some point.
Okay.
Cool. That's all we got.
Okay, so the final one. This last goal is going to be a lot. And it's all things that we have to do, though.
You don't say.
Right? So it's lead successful negotiation and contract management for critical district operations. The first one is around the transportation services. That contract is expiring this year. The custodial cleaning services, that contract's expiring this year. And then also our collective bargaining between our teachers' union. That contract is up at the end of this year. So leading and being a part of a team on all three of those things. We have to do it, but hopefully, hopefully we successfully negotiate these contracts within our budget, I guess. And with no hard feelings with any of these different groups.
Any questions on that one? That one's pretty self-explanatory. So big things coming.
This is, this is just more of a general comment and it might need to be more for the committee, Craig, than for you. It dawns on me that additional and better alignment in advance of kicking all these off with the finance director would be very valuable to us as a committee going into all this. So I just want to like put that as a plug, future agenda item TBD, Matt. But just that planning in advance of us entering all these critical processes, I think is going to be really important.
I have notes. I'm thinking similar things.
You can align on that.
Alignment would be a good idea. Try to make this as efficient as we can.
If you were paying attention to our conversation, you already got that from my side too, so.
Perfect, thanks. Thanks for bringing that up.
But no, and I agree, right? You're, as we enter these negotiations, we as a committee are aware of what we're looking to do and work with, right? Like, what are our?
Understand our parameters.
Right, what are our parameters? What are our talking points, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, I wanted to make sure.
I think there's barriers that we may not be aware of, persons are just understanding kind of where we have opportunities.
Correct, especially, and that was my conversation with Craig, where I have a better expectation this time going in. Some of our new members, this will be their first time going through the negotiation process and it's, so it's to have a understanding before you get there, so yeah.
Just taking some notes here.
Meg, did you have more? I'm sorry.
No, sorry, that was just.
Yeah, and I guess, yeah, going back to the whole rubric, so the idea will, is to just at least get these goals. Then you'll come back, you'll tie these goals with the rubric. And I guess us as a committee, we're still going to use this rubric in that, kind of that standard form that we've always done. Is that the intention for those that may have gone through, those that have gone through the process? We're not going to try to change anything. We'll continue to utilize that same format.
I hope so.
Okay, good.
Sorry, I was taking notes. Could you summarize that quickly?
Just are we going to use the same format and like all the rubric?
Yeah.
So, you know, the four standards and then the twenty substandards that are within there, subcategories that are in there.
So we're going to do, I think, this is, will be part of what I will present, I guess, when I put this together. It's going to be something very similar.
Yeah.
I'm going to strip it down because everybody knows how I feel about the DESI form.
Right, that's why.
So we'll strip it down to the Google form again, but we're going to keep the standards. And Craig and I already looked at this on a comprehensive level, I should say, an initial level, and they all fit into something. And some of those, actually, all four of those standards are reporting requirements, I believe you said, right? That has to be submitted to DESI, so. We don't have to use their paperwork, but we do have to align with that stuff still, so.
Right, okay.
We'll do our best.
Yeah, just a general comment. I think these goals are great. You know, one through three have like a true theme. And again, kind of for Greg, it's already been said, just the fact that, you know, we want to, you know, from my perspective, I want to make sure that we're supporting you in your first, not only year, but first couple of years as you get a lay of the land and really take shape and how you want things to go. So I think this is a really great track to do that, to kind of establish the next few years after this. So super supportive of all four goals and then, yeah, happy to assist her again.
Thank you.
Anything else on goals? Are we comfortable taking a vote to approve these as our goals for this year, as superintendent consecutively's goals for this year? Seems like it.
Motion to accept the goals as presented.
Second?
Motion by Chris, second by Michael. I need more discussion.
I think we just talked about some modifications, so I just want to make sure, I think, some of the edit with the modifications sort of conceptually as discussed. I'm comfortable with that.
So as opposed to as presented as discussed?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any more discussion? No? All right, motion by Chris, second by Michael. All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. All right, once you get those sorted out, we'll work on the next piece.
Okay. Good luck, Craig.
Excellent, excellent. All right. So we do have a line item here for the special town meeting warrant articles to discuss. I don't have anything on paper that's necessary. Do you have anything in mind, what usually comes up this time of year? I don't, we were talking about potentially needing something for a roof on the facility side. I don't know that that's come up in terms of any.
Yes, please, yeah.
All right, so we are currently awaiting, hopefully, and hopefully tomorrow, two reports. One report is the roof here, right? So we had an assessment done over the summer on the roof here. The other report was an assessment, or the other assessment was an assessment done of the Stacy HVAC. We already, the company that did the HVAC finished up towards the end of August. And they gave us, they said that they'd have it to us in a month, so the end of September, which doesn't fit our timeline. So I asked them, I asked Carlos to talk to the company and say, listen, just, we don't need the full report right now. We need, we're going to need it, but give us an idea of some of the things that we may have to think about purchasing in order to get this thing right. So that's what I'm awaiting for. If it doesn't, I'm going to have Carlos call these companies again tomorrow. So hopefully tomorrow or the beginning of next week, we'll have some report, maybe some idea, maybe we have to have some article.
When are articles due?
They are due one week from tomorrow. So the process that I, who would expect that will work out is if something comes up that you think may be necessary, we can submit an empty dollar value article to make sure it gets in there and then we will figure it out and polish it up so we can vote on it and formalize it at the next meeting. That's what we've done before, right?
So on the eleventh, we're having a budget subcommittee and this will be on the agenda.
Awesome.
And last round, if you remember, we moved forward the elevator, but we still have the technology updates not being moved forward in the last meeting and some furnitures we were able to cover. So I think technology could be a big article to discuss and also we have the security system. We can discuss about that too.
Yes. You just got those quotes.
Fifty thousand.
Upgrade our security burglar alarms, really.
At all schools.
At all, yes.
Okay. Anything else on that?
How does, how is this going to work timing-wise if they're due to town hall by next week?
So in the past, due meant they start putting the package together and they will slide them in. We can obviously just say we don't need it and they can pull it if it's
Correct.
soon enough, otherwise we would just pass over it at the meeting.
Would we vote tonight on an article to submit one?
That's what I mean, like, we have nothing.
We have nothing.
We as a committee need to fully vote to move forward, not just the budget subcommittee.
We do, we do. What I mean is, we can, we can put the articles in and have them not have all the information and then formalize it, vote on it, and have it updated.
Right.
If we don't end up voting on it, then we just tell town hall that's got to come out, we can't use it.
But what articles are we putting in?
Yeah, that's why.
That's why I mean like.
As of right now, we don't know. The point is, if he, what I'm trying to say is if Craig and facilities find out next Wednesday that they need six figures for something, we can draft the article and let town hall know this is going to be needed and then formalize it at the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't have to.
We don't, right now, we don't have to do anything because we don't know if anything's needed. I just want to make sure that everybody knows, like, we may tell them, these are coming. Here is like the title of what it's going to be and we'll get you the details by the end of the following week. We did this with, in the spring, with the potential need for the roof leak.
Correct.
We basically put something blank and then we had a dollar value to provide as we got closer.
But we still voted on a language and then we changed it later.
Yes.
I know it's a placeholder, right, but like right now, we have.
We have nothing to vote on.
There's zero.
I'll double-check, I'll double-check with town council to make sure that that process is okay. I know we have some time. They have the information, they're due so that they can start building everything out.
Correct.
But the actual final information based on the spring wasn't really due until like two weeks before.
Correct, yes, I understand. I'm just talking about the placeholder, like.
Yeah.
Generic, right now, we have.
As long as school committee votes on it before town meeting.
Which I understand, I get that, but what, we have two placeholders, or is it ten?
Worst-case scenario, we can always turn on an emergency meeting remote to knock these out in five minutes if we have to. I'm not sure if we could find time. Nobody's busy, so.
And then quick to when, we've had that Excel spreadsheet that we've used for years and years. There wasn't, I don't have it in front of me, but was there any indicators on that? Usually I know we've been doing almost like a van a year. Do we expect that to come up? Any van purchases or anything like that? So again, that, we've had a number of items that keep moving over towards the, you know, this coming fall where more of the capital expenditures are asked for, so I just, like I said, are any of those on the docket besides roof and HVACs and systems?
So far for October twenty-five, we don't have any vehicle purchase on that column. But we are, with our new transportation director, we are going to look at all the vehicles and see how many we can.
On Monday, we're doing it on Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if there's a need, we can put forward to.
Okay. I will add to that one piece. Before we go back to FinCon with any more requests for any vans, we definitely need to give them some additional data on the value of this service. Just, that was more of a general comment. I know I told you a general comment for the committee. They asked in the spring, we were working on it, then we had the transportation change, so I pushed them back, but they are expecting us eventually to give them some sort of presentation on the difference of outsourcing this and what it really brings and the cost and all that stuff, so. They've asked for quite a few years now, so we're working on it.
Yep.
Anything else on articles besides those things that you can think of? Okay. The only thing I'll put on my notes is this is probably a discussion that should start in July next year.
Yeah.
We'll put that kind of on the long-term agenda so that we don't always run into the last two weeks before.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, is that a hard date next week for town hall? We should find out.
I don't know.
We should find out.
They did obviously communicate to Central Office saying this is when they're due. But again, that's, I don't know if it's hard or if it's just them trying to get all of us to get our stuff together.
I understand.
I will check in with Jerry, I think he's still running this. Okay. Anything else on that? Are we done here with this piece? Okay. That brings us to the report of the interim assistant superintendent for teaching and learning.
So I have two updates for you today, tonight. One is around our new teacher orientation and mentoring program and the other is around our exponential learning K-5 launch. About a week before school started for the teachers and staff, we had two days of mentoring.
About a week before school started for the teachers and staff, we had two days of mentoring and induction where we had 25 of our new hires come to two days before the full staff reported. On day one, we kicked it off by Dr. Consigliere welcoming everyone to Milford and sharing a little bit about himself and his expectations for working in our district. We discussed who our students are in Milford Public Schools so that they really understood their responsibility of educating and supporting our kids here, and then it's all about our students. We discussed our beliefs and our expectations. They then had a chance to meet a ton of different district leaders, which included the athletic director, the SEL director, the director of special education, the director of multilingual learners and dual-language programming, and our director of nursing, and they spent time with those five different district leaders kind of learning about those different departments that will impact how they work in our schools. They then heard some more information around the expectations of communications. They had a chance to get their laptops from our director of grants, technologies, and communication. We then took a break after all that information, and they had lunch in the cafeteria with their mentors and some of our administrative team, and really kind of built some relationships there. They then came back and heard from benefits, payroll, human resources, which was both from the central office staff and from the town of Milford. They finally met with Milford Teachers Association. Basically, day one was a ton of information, a ton of talking about what Milford is, who Milford is, and kind of setting the stage and the expectations of how we operate together in Milford. Day two was really for them to spend time in their buildings, they got to know their principal, and then they worked directly for the rest of the day with their mentor to really go through the different nuts and bolts of how their buildings operate, spend time in their classrooms, setting up for their students to come in, getting their materials, getting their hands on emails and Aspen, and really learning kind of the day-to-day stuff. Their mentors do a great job of kind of working individually and answering individual needs. All of our mentors are trained by our mentor coordinators, and so there is a handbook that the mentors kind of work through to make sure that we're kind of hitting everything on an individual basis. This year, these 25 new staff hires will be part of our year-one mentoring program. They'll meet weekly with their mentors and kind of talk about different things throughout the course of the year. They will have three meetings with their grade-span mentor coordinators, which will really be focused on the pre-K2 level, the 3-5 level, the 6-8 level, or the 9-12 level, what's happening in their buildings or kind of a problem of practice that they're experiencing, and to really build relationships with those different grade-span new hires. I'll then pull them together three times in a pre-K5 group and a 6-12 group. What exactly we'll do in those three meetings will kind of depend on what's happening in Milford Public Schools, but some type of learning together, some type of problem solving, some type of case studies, and giving them time to really connect with each other. At the same time, we have our year-two and our year-three mentor program. I'm taking over the partnership with Mendon, Upton, and Ashland that Craig had established in the past where we will spend some days doing learning walks across the three different districts. They'll spend some time in the morning with professional development sessions, and then get into classrooms and kind of see students both in our district and in the other districts that we partner with. So, we've kicked off our new teacher orientation and mentoring. There's, it's a smaller class size of only 25 new hires this year, which was both nice and I think a little overwhelming for some people that didn't realize that 25 new staff members was, was a small group for us here in Milford, so. Any questions about new teacher orientation or mentoring?
Chris, just confirming, they're new to Milford, not necessarily new teachers, we include everyone in the program regardless of grade.
Correct, and it's not necessarily just teachers.
Sorry, I didn't mean to generalize there.
We had some nurses, we had some adjustment counselors, and so they're really new hires to our district as a whole.
Excellent, thank you.
That's great.
All right, so literacy is our district priority, so I'm going to try to give you all an update on where we are on our expedendary learning K-5 launch every meeting. So, we officially kicked off the implementation. All materials were delivered, there's a ton of books, a ton of resources, so Carol spent a lot of time kind of making sure that teachers were going to have their hands on what they physically needed. She's still working through, sometimes we got duplicates or we didn't get something, and so she's still working through some of those replacements, but teachers have all material for the first modular that they need in their hands as of right now, so that's, that's a good news and a, a big momentum movement for them. She also held initial professional development sessions at each of the elementary schools on the second day that teachers were here in August. She really provided the teachers with an overview of the structure of the program and some of the expectations for implementation, and what exactly she wanted to see teachers and students doing in the classroom. Dr. Consigliere and I actually attended a part of the session at Brookside, and I would say it was a really positive experience, that the teachers were engaged, they were talking with each other, they were really diving into the materials and seemed excited about the program. Since then, she's actually also held two contractual meetings, one at Memorial, one at Brookside. This is where she really gave them the hard copies, and they literally flipped through the materials to make sure that they understood where the things that they needed were and what the expectations were for the first modular that they were going to dive into. Woodlands will have a similar session, their contractual time was just not this week, it will be either next week or the following week for her to kind of dive into those pieces. Overall, what we're hearing is that the adoption is being very well-received. Teachers are generally excited about the change in the 2025 version, which is the new, most up-to-date version that we've adopted. It's not the same version that they piloted in the fall or the spring last year, and so they're excited about it. They feel as though it's more user-friendly, it has more support for our various population of students, including English language learners and special education students. They feel as though the texts that students are, are reading are more exciting and engaging. You know, they're in this like positive mindset right now as a whole, you know, I, I will say, we know that once they get into it, like, we might see a little bit of a dip of morale around implementation, that's typical, but right now, we're in a high overall, which I think is, is a good sign for the, the day of school. I do want to call out the fact that there are family support letters that will be sent home to all families around the topics and the texts that students will be reading and engaging in prior to each modular of study, so that the families are aware of what the content is going to be and what different texts kids are going to be reading and engaging with. And we are also bringing in a trainer from illustrative mathematic, I mean, expedendary learning on the half-day in September to give the teachers some more unit-specific planning time and lesson planning time on that half-day. So, there's actually multiple trainers coming in, because there's three different elementaries that are running it. So, it's a really strong launch. Carol is, you know, in it with the professional development, but it feels as though it's, it's going really well right now.
Excellent.
Questions, comments?
Thank you for the update.
Changes me easy. Nice that people were receiving it well.
Carol, is there any online component to, you know, for students?
Not-
Like versus Amplify, is it?
No, it is not the same as Amplify. I'm not sure how much there is an online component. There's physical books that will be in the hands, like, each teacher got a pack of books for each modular that are colorful and exciting and will be used as read-alouds and things like that, so.
Awesome. I'd like to hear that. I'm glad that there's not a lot of computers, time for them at this age. Okay, thank you. Move on to the report of the school business administrator.
Just a quick, quick report update from, since the last meeting. So, on the financial side, we closed the year and started the year relatively smoothly, and we kept the procedure really transparent to the town, so we didn't hear any particular questions about anything, so no news is good news, guess, boss. And, and then the school budget closed at $12, so.
Awesome, boss.
Yeah, and, and for the HR suite, it was a pretty busy summer. Summer is usually busy for the HR side of the office, so. In the spreadsheet you're, you're looking at, we hired one administrator and 107 stipend positions, and 28 support staff, and seven teaching positions, so since last meeting. And so, going forward, hopefully, the, the turnover will be slowed down a little bit, and we can, like, geared towards improving the procedures and make it more efficiently.
Any questions or comments here?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Onto the approval of out-of-state field trips, there are two, we can take them both together, sure, why not?
I think it's actually one.
Is it one?
It's information on one, they're just coming.
Thank you.
I guess, yeah, I'll take that.
Got it, sure.
So, this is, this is a request from the French teachers at Stacy to run a trip to Montreal. I don't know, over the past several years anyways, they've been taking students to Canada for a trip. This has all the information that you need, but we, it's been successful every year, so I, I think that this is a good opportunity for kids. And Mr. Schuman and Ms. Davenport run a really tight ship and doing, it's a really well-run trip for our kids. So, I guess we're just looking for a vote because it's, it's obviously out-of-state, so you would need to vote on that.
I'll motion to approve.
Motion by Brendan, second by Derek, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, onto the consent agenda, there was only a few warrants here. Before I start, anybody have anything on the meeting minutes from last meeting? Excellent, all right, so the consent agenda tonight is going to include the following, the approval of 43 warrants. The amount is $2,075,426.61. The approval of minutes from July 24th, 2025 regular meeting. And the approval of grants, which is seven from July, June, July, and August, and the total amount is There's also the professional development update listed in there, so I'll just add that. Motion to approve. Motion by Megan, second, by Chris, all in favor?
Upstate.
I see four, five in favor, you're good.
Upstate.
Totally fine, you don't have to, but you can if you want to.
All right.
What's your choice?
Upstate.
All right, we got four in favor and two upstate. Thank you. If John was here, he would tell you, you can vote on minutes even if you weren't here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Subcommittee updates. I heard Facilities met a couple of times.
We did, yeah. A month ago, now, so, yeah. A lot of what Craig had just reported on as far as, you know, elevators, roofs, HVAC systems. I mean, that was the, the most of the topics. And Brendan had sent out a text message about everybody checking out the parking lots at the high school and the, the great painting that had gone on there, so we had just discussed that and making sure that everything was going to kind of move through okay. We did a little bit of capital planning discussion, and of course, as always, we just continued to discuss the facilities maintenance log and just how we can utilize that as a tool to, to look at the facilities department and see where their needs are and how we can support them in the budget-wise.
Awesome. Policy.
Yeah. We met today. We went through, what, 14 of 15 policies?
We went through 18.
Well, we approved.
Well, yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, and so, we had a list of 18, and then we approved, I think, like 14, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
We got rid of a few. We got rid of a few.
Yeah. So, we have, we're moving.
Looking forward to seeing those. And budget, did budget meet at some point between July and now?
We have another one coming, next meeting, actually.
Okay.
We, we had a summer meeting.
We haven't met since then, this group? No.
July 24th-ish was our last meeting.
Maybe not.
No, no, our next meeting is September 11th, but we had a summer meeting.
We just met to sort of re-group for the year, talk about kind of planning for the upcoming budget cycle and things that the committee wants to take on this year, really kind of refocus the work of the committee.
Awesome.
Cool.
We will re-group again next week and discuss potential warrants, if you like.
Thank you. Anything for future agenda items?
We have the, what did we call it last year, the, the budgeting guidance.
Yes.
That was discussed at the budget subcommittee meeting, or we were bringing that up?
Yeah, yeah, I was making sure it's on, on agenda.
Do you think that may be ready for the next meeting? Not yet, okay. I'll put it in my notes for, to October, November.
Wanted to add, review of our professional development, kind of our, you know, general district topics, what are our school topics? Just having a, a good idea of what, what goes on during those PD days? And what, what is our, kind of the message that we're, we're working towards and, and improving upon?
The next meeting? We can maybe talk about the 17. Wait, when's that? Do we have a half-day on 17?
We are here on the 18th next.
Yeah, so we can give you a review of what happened on 17.
Sounds great. And I guess also just looking ahead of what some of those other topics are as we move through the year. More, again, high-level, just trying to, to understand it.
Okay.
I'll take that silence, there's no more.
What's that?
No more? No more for you, all right, excellent. So, we have nothing else listed tonight, and we do not have executive sessions, so that will bring us to the end of this meeting, and I will look for a vote to adjourn, motion to adjourn. Motion by Brendan, second by Chris, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, and good night.